Welcome to INFORM TV, Channel 25 Minneapolis and Channel 21.3 Alexandria. Today, this eighth day of September, leading up to the special session of the Minnesota Legislature. I'm going to do a little look into what should be going on, or why aren't we hearing comments on this, what I think is a special date? And then now, maybe I'm missing something here, but I'm going to throw it out at least to my Alexandria off, uh, audience. And here's some thoughts I have on this special session. You know, we've talked here a lot, been on the air here in Alexandria for over a year now, and how we must modernize our government. We need to shrink it to some better grade people, whether the Republicans or Democrats, both in the state and the county governments and City Hall and Congress especially. And look at some alternatives and come into the modern age. Yet at the same time, when you look at history and you look at governance, and that's part of the thing I looked at in this special session, we just continue to repeat things right after another. In fact, when our kids just started school now, the Victorian Age, we should be talking about the Victorian Age, because every century, basically, since we had the first one, we just continue with that. And where do our students fall in these kinds of things? And how do we adjust government to not just stay in the same rut, that so to speak? But anyway, here's my thought this Sunday afternoon, leading up to this special session, to see if I get any reaction out of my audience and see if my audience is willing to call some of the Indian casinos, call their legislature, call some of their school administrators, their school boards, and to see of is this a significant date? September 9th. And I think it is, as we go through the process here. And my thought process, do you, my audience, who I've kind of neglected, as I've been swamped on getting this Minneapolis deal done, dealing with New York, Connecticut, and Washington, DC, and being my own lawyer and all, that kind of thing. But I got the job done, got the paperwork late Tuesday, or Friday night. And anyway, this session corresponds with the first special session. If my sources that I've been looking at online and the legislative history clerk, whatever you want to talk, the first special session, to my understanding, and that's why I'm bringing it up here, was on September 9th, 1862. At an interesting time in our history here, guys, where what happened? We were in the middle of Civil War. We had Minnesota soldiers on the Potomac when I started looking at some of these items. Yet at the same time, we were at war with our native Minnesota people, our Indian people, in a unique situation with some unique words. And we'll try to get them on in a way here that I don't ramble too much, but get some real thought process and see if we get enough reaction, if you agree with me or disagree. And here's the thought process. The first special session of the Minnesota Legislature, at least in my view, as I've been doing this, was on the 9th of September. And I'm asking you, the audience of INFORM TV, the good residents of the state of Minnesota, if this gets around a little bit, or I control it now, but I haven't quite lit Channel 25 off the roof of the IDS Center that covers the entire metro area down there. So we're now, we have a platform to really address some issues and to stir things up rather than just the local yokels here in Alexandria. But here's the significance that I want my audience, or anybody viewing this, is should tomorrow, the 9th, be a day of shame for all Minnesotans? Or just the white? Or a combination of the Native Americans and the Caucasians, the traditional Minnesotans, I should say, come together and shake hands and maybe go to the casino just to share a meal and some thoughts? But here's what I'm getting at. Should it be a day of shame? Or a day of remembrance, for sure, I think? Or, and, a day to ponder, reflect, and contemplate our governance, both then and now? And probably in a way of a greeting, rather than a meeting, like our governor and our legislators have arranged to cover one simple issue, some disaster relief. And the interesting thing, when I did a little research on here with the legislative thing, and some of it is easy to follow, and I encourage you to go there, of the amount of times we've had special sessions to take care of a flood? And to take care of things like insurance companies, Berkshire Hathaway and State Farm and all the rest of them, for not having policies in place that do what? We've been in here in existence in Minnesota, 151 years, I think now, and yet we still let these cockeyed insurance companies put the fine print in there, so we're not really covered. And all with the understanding, well, you're strong enough to compensate that. You know, we talked here in INFORM TV, how what I think, the people that up in Duluth there, that got royally shafted by their insurance companies and the underwriters and whatever else, and the state came in and picked up some of the slack, but some of the newest reports lately, they still haven't got those people fully settled. And we've talked here about real estate. The only way, I don't care what a new house goes. If you've got new money, I built a new house when I was in a previous life, when I had money. And what they cost. Rich people are people looking forward to a new house, you can deal with a new house. But I'm talking about the used house, the house that's been there for either 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 50 years, 100 years, and still bringing what I call outrageous money. And because of that, what happens? People can insure themselves. And now I'm on the top of the IDS Center, starting to look down off the roof, the highest platform in the state of Minnesota, in the region. In fact, if you go north, probably the highest platform to the North Pole. And so we're finally in a position to question some of these items and things that are happening. And I encourage you to look at some of the events on the Minnesota Legislative website about how we just continue to do things and do things, and not see that our citizens have insurance when they buy a house or rent a house, then when Mother Nature kicks up on them, they're insured. Instead, we stick it with the taxpayer. And I think that is extremely sad. And now we have a time when we're sitting here with warring factions, and we're talking about the Syrian situation, and people are fed up with war and that type of thing. And obviously, I'm a hawk's hawk, always have been, if we're going to go to war, let's do it and get it over with. But at the same time, a Christian first, that we need to be thinking about what we're doing and why we aren't doing it better. All we have to do is back and look at some history. Yet at the same time, when I'm doing this program, I'm thinking, where is education in Minnesota that always has raise your hand and shut up, as far as I'm concerned, and send us more money? In the last session of the Legislature and the Governor, they're sending them a ton of money. But yet here, to me, there's an incredible historic event here and happening, and we're going to have a special session on that day? And old Dean Erdal, that used to be my representative, or at least he'd always come and get money out of me, when I had money to help his campaigns and kind of the historian and of the Capitol of about retired schoolteacher, history teacher, or whatever Dean was. Why aren't guys like that speaking up? And here is the point that I want you to think about, that I think should be taught and talked about in our classrooms tomorrow morning. Now, somebody from Alexandria would win $200 million this evening on some lottery someplace, the word would get out kabang. But what about governance? What about a significant event? And here's the significant event that I found online, and it led me to do some additional research. And I haven't talked to any of the legislators or fellow press organizations, because they think it's good, they run with it and as an exclusive on their part, where I'm trying to make this INFORM TV now with a decent signal, a big signal, I should say, and start affecting things in a positive manner, resolution from government and events, rather than just talking and debating them to death. And here's the first thing that I found, the US-Dakota War of 1862. And it kind of floored me when I looked at it, yet at the same time, and I'm an old politician here, from a standpoint of getting things done, with the political process, I took on the Green Giant and threw him on the ground for a couple of years, and before he stomped me in the mud. We worked with Tip O'Neill, I was the one that put the money scheme together, so when the industry needed to get in, I just raised my hand in the back of the room, a young kid, they all laughed at me. But next morning, Congressman Nolan got Chuck Kent and I in there, as two good Christian men, and we sold a policy that we hadn't necessarily put together, but it turns out, I think I was the only one that really understood the power of it. And Tip O'Neill said, yeah, that sounds good, and maybe eventually, other foreign policy can follow you guys' guidelines and vision. But anyway, here's what I want you to think about today on tomorrow's events. And do you think it's appropriate that we're allowing them to happen? And it relates to the political things of repeating the Victorian Age, repeating history, glorifying politicians that may or may not should be glorified. But here's the point that I'm bringing to the viewers of INFORM TV, and if I throw it at one of my fellow TV stations yet tonight, to see if I get any reaction from them. Here's the deal. What Governor Ramsey, who called the first special, Alexander Ramsey, called the first special session? And here's what the comment that really caught my attention, and wondering why the casino at Jackpot Junction, in Redwood County, I guess it is, right across the line, but down in my old country, Renville County, and we saw on go along the Minnesota River. And I'll add some history of this, as schoolkids, of course. But here's the thing of significant, at a time of terrorism and a time of tyrants in leadership around the world, here was the opening remark, not in his written text. And he said this to our Minnesota Legislature on September 9th, 1862, if I'm quoting things right. "Our course then is plain. The Sioux Indians of Minnesota must be exterminated or driven forever beyond the boundaries of Minnesota." To me, folks, that is one whale of a statement, that the Sioux Indians of Minnesota, the natives that were here first, must be exterminated or driven forever beyond the borders of Minnesota. And the interesting thing on this article, it goes on to talk about Alexander Ramsey was born on September 8th. In fact, it's his birthday today, as I'm doing this, in 1815, in, is it Hummels Town, Pennsylvania? Anyway, Pennsylvania. In 1849, a little history on our governor, and I presume Ramsey County is named after him. But I want you to think about this, knowing some political things and dealing with a lot of people like I have in my life. "In 1849, Ramsey was appointed Governor of Minnesota Territory by President Zachary Taylor. In this role, he also acted," and I think this is significant, "as the Territory's Indian Superintendent, aware that his political future people depended on his ability to open lands west of the Mississippi River for white settlement." Renville County, my old point of being raised and doing business, whatever, for 50 years. And then it goes on to say, "Ramsey teamed up with his friend, Henry Sibley." In other words, some political wrangling going on here. "A former fur trader, who was also the Territory's delegate to the US Congress." And this before statehood, of course. They're talking about before statehood, but the session, obviously, was after 1858, where it became a state. "Together with Luke Lee, US Commissioner of Indian Affairs," so all these guys that have been involved with our Native American friends, "they negotiated the treaties of 1851." Which to me says, they took advantage of their fellow man and led to some of these things, rather than some understanding, some sharing, some education, or whatever. And anyway, it brings up some really questionable conduct and political process here. And Ramsey was investigated, this is what's really interesting, Ramsey was investigated and acquitted by the US Congress on allegations of fraud connected to the 1851 treaty negotiation. But the interesting thing on this, people, then it goes on to say, "During his political career," his political career, so he was always active in the political process, "Ramsey held many offices in Minnesota and Washington, DC, territorial governor, mayor of St. Paul, state governor, US Senator, and Secretary of War under President Rufus B. Hayes. He was also a shrewd businessman and made a sizable fortune in real estate." You see my thought process here of why are we having a special session on a day like this, when we probably had some questionable politics and joining the old and new ways, as they say at that point? And it also says, "Ramsey was also the first president of the Minnesota Historical Society, a post he held when the US-Dakota War broke out in 1882." And the interesting thing, there's a whole bunch of things that kind of grabbed me, that I think our schoolkids should be talking about, and especially our inner city schools. You know, now I look off, I look all around, I can see the airport, I'm looking down at all the big shot lawyers, bankers, and whatnot, that will cuss me there, probably as much as they cuss me here in Alexandria. But anyway, it's a great focal point to get some thought process. And one of the thought processes is, we hear about the trouble now in my other channel district, in the Twin Cities of the east side of St. Paul, and going on, North Minneapolis, with, once again, insurance not taking care of them when the storm went through, and Dr. Martin Luther King Day of hearing reaction from some of the black community, how we're not being taken care of. I don't know of anything going on in Minnesota where we ever had our governors want to exterminate any other race, other than our Native Americans that were here first. And so that needs to be bought into the fabric of education and discussion as well, I think. And it also brings up the question, our Jewish friends, the Holocaust. And you know Riley, I'm not a Riley fan, I'm conservative, but one thing I did agree with him, one night I was flicking channels, where he talked about all these hustlers. You know, we've got these race hustlers, we've got the Holocaust hustlers, we've got hustlers for this, that, and the other thing, their point of view, and they're always getting mishandled, and so on and so forth. And that's why I'm bringing this out. But what I wanted to look at here in some of this stuff, as our time winds down, is how government was starting to react. They talked about commissioners should go out and take care of this, where we need to buy hay out in the frontier. They even talked in this time about mileage and per diem. You know, we all think that, well, mileage didn't come about until we got vehicles, right? This is 1862, didn't you have either a train, I suppose, or a horse? But they were already paying mileage and paying per diem. It's in some of the fine print, I hear. And the other thing, when you guys see Governor Dayton now, remember, all these guys are ready to come in and come up to the platform for all, on top of the IDS Center, where Channel 25 broadcasts out of, and I control the transmitter, the antenna, and all that kind of stuff. But here's probably the Douglas County Democrats, when I pick on them, they refer to him in the terminology, the Governor Ramsey, that his excellency, the governor, if considered, consistent with the public business, is hereby requested to accompany said commissioners and cooperate with them on their behalf, that the governor is hereby requested to send in his discretion, discretion, the numbers and places to which they should send such troops as necessary to protect the people, and so on and so forth, from outbreaks and that type of thing. And the interesting thing, I also saw when glancing through, and I can't even find a marker here today, that I could mark and write this in my temporary facilities here, they talked about war. And this wasn't that long ago, it's less than 100 years before my birth. And it goes on here, one of the resolutions of that session is, "Whereas, in the progress of the war of the restoration of the Union, the President of the United States has deemed it necessary issue a proclamation conditionally emancipating the slaves in the rebellious states and confiscating the properties of all persons engaged in the rebellion." And see the correlation between what we were doing as a state, as a nation, we were doing it a positive basis, we would think, but were we doing it a positive basis here? Now, obviously, men and women were being killed. You know, we recently, or a year or two ago, had a similar family event over at Saicas here, where this woman just comes home and this guy beats her, if I remember the thing, to death and that type of thing. So, and the other thing that I thought in this discussion here, is that they reference the President, "Resolved by the Senate, the House of the state of Minnesota, that in this great act of his able, popular, and efficient administrator, Abraham Lincoln, has adopted a line of policy which strikes the very cause of the war and must evaluate in sudden overthrow of this wicked rebellion." "Resolved that this act of devotion to country increases our confidence and the ability and integrity of the President, and commends his administration to the earnest and undivided support of all loyal people and the gratitude of its civilized world." That the Secretary of State is requested to forward a copy of this resolution to the President. And obviously, I'm jumping around here and some of the things, but there's just a number of things in this whole process that caught my attention, that our schools should be thinking about, our churches should be thinking about, and we as individuals, rather than going to a casino to gamble on Monday, like I said, if I had money and still living in Renville County, maybe should go down to the Jackpot Junction, or Mystic Lake, or one of the other casinos. And I encourage you, maybe give your favorite casino a call tonight, after you watch this. Are you aware of this? Do you have any thought process of what INFORM TV is bringing up, that you're allowing a special session at a time when the government of Minnesota decided that the Sioux Nation should be exterminated or driven beyond the borders of the state of Minnesota forever? Wow, as they say, it about knocked me on my keister, and there's just a whole number of things that they talk about, that I would sure like to see that our kids were exposed to. But the other thing in this process, I want you to think about, that INFORM TV, I've talked about, the need for modernization of government. If you go down, there's pretty well a list of things, it's pretty easy to read. That's one thing, the clerk or whoever had it. And we talk about significant dates, and I'm a firm believer of significant dates or events to have a special session, and not being modernized or not slap our Minnesota 10 or minus 10 on the butt of saying, why would you pass emergency legislation to give to compensate people that were damaged by floods? And not just say, the governor, with signing by the leaders of the legislature, can approve it, or can ask by email to vote, and at some point in time, sign in a notarized signature or whatever? But here's what I'm getting at. Obviously, September 9th, in my view, is just a mind-boggling event, yet we ignore it. Even our Native Americans now that are blessed with casinos, and yet we have Native Americans that aren't sharing this, and that to me, just is always, just drove me crazy, how our state government could set it up and not take care of all the people, as they say. But here's the other thing about significance. There also had a special session, the 41st Legislature of 1919, extra session, 1919, and it was on this date through the 19th. And here it was, "To ratify the proposed Woman Suffrage Amendment." Isn't that the right to vote, or something like that? "To enact legislation to also benefit World War I soldiers, to create a state board of relief," in other words, some assistance for the needy, "to and to amend election laws to establish a better state budget system, and to pass laws to curb profiteers." We don't do that today anymore, do we? We just let the profiteers take all they want. "And reduce the high cost of living." You know, there's lots of things we could do to reduce the cost of living, and to address the extreme profiteers, you know, the Ibuuda guys, and Warren Buffetts. Matters, and then it goes on, "Matters considered legalize county board action appropriation money for relief of flood sufferers." See? "And act relating to nomination, election of presidential electors," another, was that related to Electoral College process? I'm not sure. "Creation of state board of relief, food stamps in its early stage, I suppose, provide for investigation of cost of living to be performed by Commissioner of Agriculture, bonuses paid to military personnel, and women's suffrage." And it also goes on, and I kind of move some things around here, I think this is quite similar to what I talked about before, and other than in the fact that they talked here, "The message of Governor Ramsey to the Legislature of Minnesota delivered the extra session, September 9th, 1882, on September 9th, Alexander made an announcement to a special session of Minnesota Legislature. Our course then is plain, the Sioux Indians, the Sioux Indians of Minnesota must be exterminated and driven forever beyond the borders of Minnesota." And it was all based on a course of actions that were happening. "In the week leading up to this special session, the barricaded towns of Hutchinson and Forest City had been attacked by Little Crow, had led an attack at Acton Township, and Dakota forces had scored a victory at Birch Cooley, which is in the Renville County area, Redwood Falls area. Ramsey's demand was not part of his prepared manuscript." I guess that's what I wanted to get at. "But it captured the attention of a fearful public and, of course, a press that wanted flashy headlines, and was included in every published version of his speech. Ramsey began donating material to the Minnesota Historical Society in 1860s. Two weeks after his death, in 1903, the Minneapolis Journal reported that papers from Ramsey's term as governor were found in a pile of rubbish about to be burned in the Capitol furnace. Among those salvaged papers preserved today by the Minnesota Historical Society are telegraphs and letters to and from Abraham Lincoln." Really interesting. And... And how things happen and repeat. And my question to you is, do you feel my disgust with a state government and a governor that calls a special session? My disgust with it not being in news? At least, I haven't heard it. Now, you can, of course, email me, al@informtv.com. If you've heard this and some public official, and I'm off-base, I'm still not lit on the tower in Minneapolis. But I'll put this up there, for better or worse, richer or poorer, as they say, on the tower here at Alexandria. And to see if the ripple effect of talking about a significant date in the history of Minnesota should be talked about more. Thanks for listening to Informed TV. I'm Alan Repke, Alexandria, Minnesota.